November 1st, 2021, roll call vote. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tadawam?
Yes.
Okay, um, we need to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Uh, any motion in the discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Haren?
Yes.
Mr. Tadawam?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Okay, we will be, uh, journeying, uh, recessing the executive set, um, regular session
Convene the meeting of November 1st, Select Board Meeting. Roll call, vote. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
We're in the chair here. Chair's here. May you please rise as we pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we honor our service people, both here and abroad, both men and women, and both past and present, and we also honor our healthcare workers and first responders.
Okay, please be seated. Okay, I need a motion to approve the warrant for this week and to authorize Mr. McGinnis to use the stamp to sign the warrant.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson on the motion. Any questions? Okay, roll call, vote. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay. No appointments? Well, appointments, like hearings and stuff, we do have an appointment, but that's not under appointments. It's one of those oddball things.
I wanted that, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, alright. Hey, Black Friday! Alright, we got applications from Best Buy and Walmart. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Alright, on the... Before we... Motion was made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Mr. Mickelson to approve both Best Buy and Walmart?
Yes.
Thank you. On the motion, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me that the police plan, safety plan, was put into effect, was submitted, as it usually is. put into effect, was, was submitted, as it usually is. Uh, when I read through the, uh, the list, I didn't see it, I mean, I may have missed it, but, um, I don't know if that's part of the new automated system or, or what, but I just want a clarification on that.
For, um, they've signed off on Walmart, I've seen that, looking for the, I can, I can look while we're meet, we're meeting, but the police generally sign off, so I'll look real quick.
Yeah, but shouldn't, shouldn't, if we're gonna use that new system, shouldn't that be part of that?
It is, it's in the, it's in the workflow, so it doesn't get approved unless they've approved it.
Well.
I, I see what Frank means, and the detail is not listed, uh, that the police, the chief has approved, which it always is in all the others.
Yeah, I'm looking it up right now.
Same there with the, both of them are same.
Right. We've had pretty good success since we put that into the operation, ejected every year, I'd hate to see this lift off the cracks.
Is it a different form?
It's a submittal. They have to submit it.
Yeah, let's see here.
It just seems to me it should be part of that automated, uh, list, somebody has to check it off or it'll be included.
It is, they do, let's see, I'm just trying to find the record, uh, about that.
Oh, the, the police department is on the second one is included.
Yeah, and the Walmart it is, and Best Buy.
Right. Second one shows police department.
Hold on, let's see. Police department checked off.
Uh, the police have signed off on it.
On both?
Uh, yes, on both, the, the Walmart it shows it, uh, and then this one is,
Oh, there it is.
It's, it's online, but not in the sheets that you received.
Can we make sure that's included from now on on the sheets? So, asking that question.
We generally do that, it must have just been an oversight, so.
It, it, it actually is here, I just noticed it. October twenty-second, eight fifty AM. The second one says police department sign off, which is the, the first one, the Best Buy. That was, well, that was the, was sent to the police for sign off. It's it. If you read it correctly. Okay. The Walmart one had, had done, it's noted that the police approval was October twenty-sixth. Gotcha, yep.
So it is, Anthony, it is in the, in the, in the records?
Anthony's not here, Stanley.
Part of the record, correct? I'm sorry, geez, getting Anthony on the mind.
It, it, re, it regardless, it does not get issued, even if the, the board had voted, it doesn't get issued until all the other departments have, uh, approved it.
Alright. On the motion, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Chair votes no, as it has done in the last ten years. No, 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 especially Walmart.
Only five times, say it five more times.
Okay, um, alright, get rid of that. Next item on the agenda, we have an appointment to the waterways, uh, management committee, we have Anthony Salvideo. I hope I said that correctly.
Did, probably.
Yeah, that's my Federal Hill, North Providence, working out there all the time, so. Alright, um, just kinda introduce yourself and explain why you wanna be part of this ostentatious com, committee.
Um, well, big believer in, uh, giving back to the community and public service, um, I'm originally from Worcester area, uh, where I served as the chairman of the license commission for ten years, I served on the Massachusetts State Lottery also as a commissioner. Um, I believe deeply in public service, uh, my connection to our community is the harbor originally, uh, my family came here in the late nineties. I had a sailboat in the harbor that we rented a morning from Concordia for years, um, used it as our, uh, summer home essentially, and that's how I became um, intimate with this area, uh, years later, I was fortunate enough to be able to move here, um, I lived permanently down here and wanted to give back in some way. Uh, practicing attorney, uh, been an attorney for over thirty-one years. Thought I would, we had, lend some value back into the system, um, and Waterways is near and dear to my heart, obviously, because my connection to the community started there, but, uh, as time has gone on, I've also become, uh, in love with the land area around here too, so. That's a little bit about me, uh, I have a bachelor's, uh, from Columbia University, and a JD from Suffolk University Law School.
Thanks. Uh, I won't, I won't hold, uh, you being an attorney against you, that's for sure.
You love me, Adam.
We truly, we truly live in God's country.
I agree with that one.
So very blessed.
Sometimes if you live somewhere else, you appreciate it.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gray, uh, Mr. Herron, excuse me, uh, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions, there better be none, uh, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Alright, congratulations TJ.
Thanks TJ.
So much, I, I'm looking forward to serving the community.
Stay dry.
Take care everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Alright, skipping along from Black Friday, we'll just, we're on to Christmas. And we have, uh, David Russell here from the, uh, Village, uh, Village Business Association, Paydown Business Association, and they're looking to light it up.
Nice.
Right.
Hi David.
How are you sir?
Good. So you're looking to do this again, huh?
Yes, it's, uh,
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
One sec. You still on it?
Uh, I guess, David, we're having some, uh, issues with your, uh, with your carrier. So, um, basically, um, they, if I can, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll take this for you, you're basically doing, as you're doing, you're requesting permission to do, to wrap the light posts, um, down with, uh, white LED lights, uh, from Su, Seven South of Bridge Street, Seven North of Bridge Street, and all along the west side of Elm, um, it was well received over the years, last year there were a lot of people taking pictures, um, and seen it posted on, um, Facebook often and other social media, and, um, I couldn't be more than happy to, I'm glad you are, you're looking to do this again. Excuse me.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie, on the motion, any questions? Does that mean they, they wanna stay open, uh, all night on Black Friday as well? That's a separate request.
My sister-in-law's store is gonna be open twenty-four hours.
I'm not sure, well, I'd be, to be consistent, if they asked, I'd still would have. I have to be consistent, I'm sorry.
It's a kid's store Sean.
I'm sorry, I have to be consistent.
Little baby, little bambinos.
No, 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 it's consistency, consistent, consistent, consistent. Alright, on the motion, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes, yes.
Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Alright, good luck David, thank you.
Thank you very much, good to see everybody.
Okay, with that lag, let's talk about the municipal broadband advisory committee.
Ready to get through that one Sean.
That kinda just went right in there, kinda fit right in. Um, alright, so my understanding is we have two people who have applied, we still need four. So, uh,
Two more, yes.
We need two more. Alright, um, so, basically, what this is for is to get the word out there, that we're looking for two people to serve, um, on this committee. We are, we are looking for non-elected, non-appointed officials, people who are just regular citizens in town, who wanna get involved, who wanna look into seeing whether or not the town would be able to do the same thing that behaving is trying to do, um, that other communities throughout the, the United States has done, to have their own broadband network, um, and deliver high-speed broadband at a lower rate than currently is being, uh, assessed by, uh, the current provider Comcast. So, if anyone out there is interested, please send a simple resume, um, to the select board's office. Uh, you can go on our website, uh, and click on either my name on the email, or, uh, Mr. McGinnis's, um, name. Uh, I believe there's also a link for the select board itself on the same page, uh, and, uh, please, uh, send that resume to us, we'd like to get this committee, um, as quickly as possible. While I'm at it, and clicking on the email, I noticed on our page, Mr. Tattelbaum's name is not clickable for an email, I'd like to get his name clickable.
It is corrected.
Everybody on the board is clickable by any citizens who can send us an email, so.
That has been, that has been corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tattelbaum had issues logging in today, so that was the result of us correcting his email.
There you go, alright. Alright, so that takes care of that, next item is the Veterans Day, um, we have a Veterans Day, uh, um, event, uh, being held by the, uh, Veterans Committee, and I believe the, um, uh, the Friends of the Elderly, uh, it'll be on, this is the veteran, alright, this is the Veterans Day ceremony, this is the Veterans Day ceremony, eleven AM, on November eleventh, um, and this will be held at the Veterans Memorial Grove on Dartmouth Street, um, and that is, um, at the, uh, Council on Aging building, and I believe Matt is here, ah, there he is, pops in. Alright, Matt, um, you can just, wanna reemphasize what I just said?
Yeah, you did a great job sir, uh, that will be, uh, rain or shine, um, and we will, uh, you know, have, uh, the same kind of event that we had last year, uh, we'll have, uh, revelry and retreat played by the, uh, Dartmouth Community Band, uh, and we'll, um, like I said, do a twenty to twenty-five minute, uh, service honoring our, our, honoring our veterans.
Okay, as they should be.
Uh, and also, sir, if it's alright, I'd like to take this, uh, platform to let the community know that my office has officially moved from Town Hall, uh, to the Council on Aging. Uh, number is still the same, um, very accessible, so just come on down and, uh, swing by. Feel my new up.
And that move, that move is actually a good move, because it now, it now brings, um, Town Hall can be intimidating, and, and to, especially to, to some of the veterans, widows, it can be very intimidating, but the Council on Aging is a, is a, is a good place, and it's almost like shooting fish in a barrel, so it is nice.
Training and make it a lot more, uh, a lot easier, uh, to work with the Friends of the Elderly and, um, the other representatives down there, so.
So that's, that's, that's a good thing, Mr. Tattelbaum, you had your hand up? Yeah, a quick question, uh, regard to, uh, uh, rules and regs, uh, I, I, I was at the ceremony last year, and that particular grove was a very special place for me, I don't know if we have an issue with too many of our members here, as an official meeting or not, but if it is, I'd like to be included as one of the people to go. I don't know, any clue? No, I don't think, no, generally these type of things fall out of the realm of an open meeting law. Okay, thank you. It'd be the same thing like a parade, you know, or, you know, or an event, attending an event, you're attending. Well, the nine eleven event, we're all there too, so yeah, okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay.
Uh, that's all I re, uh, put out, uh, tonight sir.
Oh, one more time, eleven, just.
Uh, eleven, um, on, uh, November eleventh, at the Memorial Grove, rain or.
Great.
Eleven hundred on eleven eleven.
Wow.
Synchronicity.
I guess.
Alright, and there's also the veterans breakfast, I believe.
Uh, yeah, yes, uh, the veterans brunch, uh, at, uh, Rachel's, um, Friends of the Elderly are putting that on, um, I know the, uh, the signup sheet says to the twenty-ninth, but, uh, I would encourage last-minute veterans to give a call and see if they can, yeah, so, uh, ask, ask for Maria, uh, the, for the, at the Friends of the Elderly, just call the, uh, Miss, uh, Council on Aging, and they'll put you through.
And I believe, I believe we, um, the friends are going to be honoring a one-hundred-year-old WWII veteran, correct?
I had the pleasure of, uh, celebrating his birthday, actually, me and Chris Perre went over and, uh, we're hung out with him and his family, and it was a very nice afternoon, and, um, I went and invited the family, and we're having him and seven of his, uh, family members, uh, at the, gonna be, uh, incredible, and I know there's gonna be another WWII veteran that I had the pleasure of meeting, uh, he'll be there as well, so, um, really looking forward to, to seeing everyone out in the community.
Okay, um, are those gonna be the only two WW, uh, WWII veterans gonna be at the breakfast?
That I know of, sir, that I know of, yes sir.
Okay, um, board, I would like the board to vote on a proclamation for these two gentlemen, Matthew can get the name to Mr. McGinnis, uh, and we can have it, uh, printed up, and then we can get it over to, uh, uh, I, I'll be going to the, to the brunch, uh, but if, Sean, if you can get that over to Matt, and Matt can bring it over, um, that Friday.
We have one, uh, already prepared, it's just, we'll prepare one for the other veteran as well, sir.
Yes, please.
Not a problem.
Yeah, alright, and, um, I, I would assume the board is agreeable to that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you Matt.
Thank you.
And, uh, congratulations on the move, and we'll, uh, good luck on the eleventh, and I will see you on Friday.
Yes sir, have a great evening.
Okay. Alright, next item is we have pancreatic cancer awareness month, we did this last year, and I believe we did this the year before, Mr. Mickelson.
Yeah, just before we just get into this very important thing, uh, um, Mr. Russell, uh, apologized for his, uh, his lack of, uh, connection properly, and he wanted to thank the board for helping out the, uh, um, all the, uh, the people in the village that are responsible for this lighting ceremony.
Alright, so, Mr. Russell, thank you, and we were, I was more than happy to, uh, to, to take over for you, uh, with problems. Alright, uh, November is cancer awareness month, uh, pancreatic cancer awareness month, and we have a proclamation, uh, declaring the month of November pancreatic cancer awareness month in the town of Dartmouth, whereas in twenty-twenty-one, an estimated six, sixty thousand four hundred and thirty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty, twenty will die from the disease. Whereas every day more than twelve hundred and fifty-seven people worldwide will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and while death rates are declining in many other cancers, death rates are increasing for pancreatic cancer, whereas pancreatic cancer has the highest mortality rate of all major cancers. It is currently the third leading cause of cancer-related death in the United States after lung and colon. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just six percent, whereas the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally the late stage, and seventy-three percent of all pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while ninety-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas the Recalcitrant, um, Cancer Research Act was signed into law in two thousand thirteen, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework of strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the stack, the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases, and whereas it'll be very difficult to leverage the opportunities that come out of the scientific framework developed as a result of the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act. Unless sustained and adequate funding is provided by the National Institutes of Health and National Co, Cancer Institute, and whereas federal funding for medical research is critical to job protection and creation in Massachusetts, and whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Dartmouth and nationwide, through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatment and a cure for pancreatic cancer, whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Dartmouth support most patients currently battle, battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure, whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Dartmouth are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatment. Therefore, be it resolved that the select board designate the month of November twenty-twenty-one as pancreatic cancer awareness month in the town of Dartmouth, Massachusetts, what say ye board? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to sign.
Okay, and to, and to, uh, have Mr. McGinnis stamp it?
Yeah, I'll come in tomorrow and sign it.
Alright, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gracie, on the motion, any questions, being none, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. And the chair votes in favor. Okay. Alright, next item is we have DCTV uh Mass Access Streaming Bills um. I believe Peter's here for that. Peter?
Yes, I am. Um thank you for having me tonight. I'm looking for your support of House Bill one thirty and how incentive bill two two zero zero. Uh the bills were put forth by Mass Access, which is a membership-based advocacy group. That comprises of approximately seventy percent of the community access centers in Massachusetts, which DCTV is part of. As you're aware, DCTV has thrived through um the federal mandated franchise license agreement, which. Um has the cable company remit up to five percent of their gross annual revenues back to the town to support local programming. Um as you also aware, media consumption is rapidly changing. There's more of an online. Streaming platform now versus traditional cable, so this bill seeks to replicate the success of the franchise agreement system. Where would uh charge these um. Digital streaming providers a five percent fee for doing business using the public right of way to provide their services. Uh monies would be collected by the state twice a year and distributed to the State General Fund, Municipalities and Community Access Centers. Uh the distribution will be done by the existing distribution methods that the state uses for their cherry sheets and other state aid. Um the breakdown of the five percent would be uh the state would receive twenty percent of the funds. Local municipality general funds would receive forty percent and forty percent would be earmarked towards community access centers. Um there have been some states that have um about nine states have implemented a similar fee to this. Including uh Florida, Ohio and Pennsylvania. Uh DCTV, as you're aware, is a enterprise fund, so we're fully funded through cable revenues over the past fifteen years. We do not receive any revenue from Comcast for their internet or phone service system, so we only receive cable revenue. And while the number of subscribers haven't hasn't gone down, the way Comcast accounts for monies collected. Has has seen a steady decrease and over the last four years, we've seen a decrease in um revenue that we're receiving. Um so we hope that this bill would help offset any future losses and help support DCTV to continue uh. Providing the same level of service at no additional cost to the taxpayers in town. So that's about what I have. If you have any questions?
Do I remember have any questions?
So these letters are going out? Have have already been mailed?
No, yeah, you're we would need to vote to support them and we would send them out.
So there's no way we need to sign, that's all?
Uh no, we just wanted to get the board's approval to support this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Uh on the motion, any questions? Alright, Mister Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mister Gracie?
Yes.
Mister Mickelson?
Yes.
Uh Mister Herron?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister McGinnis, old business, take it.
Okay, um COVID, uh no new updates. We consider continued to monitor the situation and the state's guidelines. And um there's been, you know, that we're in a lull, so hopefully things continue to go in the downswing. Uh Bliss Corner, uh the EPA was on site in Bliss Corner on October twenty-second. Uh to evaluate, you know, as you know, in their letter, they had identified five properties that they were looking to start to clean up. Uh they were in on-site evaluating which property that they wanted to s- to to start on. Our uh licensed site professional for the town, uh Christine LeBlanc, as well as our Director of Public Health, Chris Michaud. Uh were on-site with the EPA to meet and review. Um so uh. Nothing was set in stone, but they did meet with some property owners. Uh they have not determined a schedule yet. It's really just kind of assessing the area and coming up with a project plan, so as they develop a formal plan, I will pass that along to the board. I like no joke, uh no new updates.
Mister Tattlebaum?
We uh so we still don't know specific locations or any of them at this point?
Uh uh I can't say for sure what the of the five specific locations. They were on-site at one of the locations. Uh I I don't have the address. I can certainly send that along to the board though.
But but they they still are not, for whatever the reason, not informing us of what the locations are?
Uh not that I'm aware of, no.
Do we have an idea as to why they do that? If they even why they're wandering around the neighborhood?
I can't speak for the EPA. Um they did meet at one of the sites. Uh I don't have the address. I don't know if I'd wanna say it publicly, just. Because EPA's project, um but we can certainly share that with the board if they wanna know.
So we may know one, but that's it.
Correct.
Okay.
I I think our 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 Director of Health and our our Licensed Site Professional, I think they have a good idea of what they may be, but they still are not. Hundred percent sure.
But that would be from their own analysis, not not being informed specifically.
Correct.
Big secret, okay.
Mister Talib, please take over the meeting.
Okay. Um any other questions from comments? On the Bliss Corner? And you mentioned there were no updates on Lake Nokachoke?
Correct.
Okay, that that does bring us to the minutes. Any comments on the minutes?
Motion to accept uh the minutes of Sept- September thirteenth and October eighteenth as written.
Check of that.
Any comments on the minutes? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Mister Gracie?
Yes.
Mister Herron?
Yes.
Mister Mickelson?
Yes.
Vice Chair of OTS as well.
Chair of OTS, yes.
Chair of OTS, yes, thank you.
Information. I'd like to say something.
Um okay, that's in the minutes. Okay, any?
Just. Just so there's no confusion about this Veterans Day and the Friends of the Elderly, uh they're two different dates. One um is this coming Friday, I believe, at uh at twelve o'clock at Rachel's. Which the Friends of the Elderly are putting on and being sponsored by Representative Chris Maki. And then the other date was the eleventh that we just talked to uh about, so. Even though they represent similar uh uh things, uh they're different dates.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. John?
Uh Mister Tattlebaum, now earlier we the Veterans Agent said he moved into the building at the Bullid Wellness Center. I was wondering if we could put on a future agenda, the uh issue with custodian and maintenance up there. Now that now that we have two buildings opens, I think we should uh review the maintenance and custodial work on those two bu- buildings going forward.
Comment that, Sean McGinnis, any comment on that?
Uh well, one correction, so uh the Veteran Service Officer moved into the Council on Aging, not the Bullid Center.
Okay. But the Bullid Center will be opening, so we will have uh new needs for more services up there for our custodian and maintenance staff.
Uh the plan was to use the existing staff to maintain the building. Uh there could be. Uh we're evaluating uh the cleaning of the building. Uh to see if we need, you know, we contract out our cleaning services, but we may be able to use internal staff to do the cleaning of that Bullid Center building, so. Uh we're in the process of reviewing that, so.
Okay.
Is that, you wanna get a report back on that when you finish the analysis, Sean?
I can do that, sure.
Okay with you, John Herron?
That's fine.
Okay.
Fine.
Anybody else have a comment? Mister McDonald or Frank?
Frank? Um yeah, I I received a uh call during the uh outages in the. Uh which at least from my standpoint was uh uh included internet and uh. Cable and power and you know, uh Pony Express, all that stuff didn't didn't come by. Uh and a constituent suggested to us and wanted to know why we haven't considered it. Some sort of notification system that would periodically be updated. Uh and I see it as I see it as a as a phone call uh as opposed to uh internet, obviously, if the internet's not gonna work. On the status of what's going on in town as far as power outages, uh et cetera. And that seemed that seemed reasonable to me, uh something that we couldn't should do. Uh to give some people, some people are 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 alone and they have uh no uh. No one known to interact with and to me it would be helpful if they knew that, you know, fifty percent of the town doesn't have power. Expect it to be back on such and such a date at such and such a time. Uh and things like that, uh whatever whatever would be deemed appropriate. Uh she said that one of the towns, I think it was Fairhaven, uh did did just that. And for residents in Fairhaven that weren't just in what was going on, that was very helpful for them.
What is the proposal specifically, Frank?
Well, I think we'd have to figure it out, but again, you can't you can't use internet. You can't you you couldn't put something on the website, because if internet goes down, they can't get there. So I I I would propose something uh uh a phone line that's recorded line. Uh probably done by the uh uh the uh the safety officer. Would be what I would envision. Uh with with a with a with a quick uh update on uh again, really something related to power. Uh and other services, uh especially if there's gonna be something, let's say it was a a blizzard or something, it needed to have. Uh the emergency services kick in to help people. Uh it'd be nice for people to be able to know that easily. Again, the the uh all the details are not worked out, certainly. Uh but to me, to me, something like that would would be helpful for people to give a call to uh. To that line and not basically know what's going on, whereas now they know nothing about what's going on.
Stanley?
I I too got a phone call. It's gotta be the same uh lady. Um she, wh- what happened was um the. Fairhaven Police Department called WBSM and they kept the people in uh informed of what was going on. And so I had called the chief and I said, mention that to him and I said, maybe maybe we should come up with a program. Uh through the police department, um either like Frank suggesting, besides the phone call to the radio station. Have something on our phone system and they can work that out. That's not a bad idea. Uh because especially older individuals that are, number one, they lost their power, they can't get in their cars if they have garages. Because they don't have power to open the door. Uh so they're stuck, uh and they're a little concerned and they're frightened and it's cold. And I think police presence at that point, not presence, but at least a voice from. Safety officer, anybody, you know, that represents the Dartmouth Police Department would be a great idea, so.
I know the town subscribes to the reverse nine one one, um and it also does through. Um a phone program through the Bristol County Sheriff's Office, through the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office. Where they can do uh reverse calls to residents. I believe you have to sign up for that. Um also, you can sign up through EverSource to get notices on outages in your area. Um and. I know if you don't have internet, you don't have access to the EverSource outage map, but the outage map is um. Uh updated, I believe every half hour, if not every fifteen minutes to see uh the number of people that are out. Um and I was during this, during. Form and whatnot, I was doing that on a certain page. And um looking at other numbers of other communities. I mean Dartmouth was hit well, uh you know, was was whacked good. Fairhaven was whacked worse. Um Manapoiset was really hit and then further down you had Sandwich, uh Falmouth. Bourne, Plymouth, Duxbury, um they were close to almost seventy-five to ninety percent out. Um the entire community. Um Dartmouth was about roughly sixty percent, maybe a little bit less uh at its peak. I believe at some point in time on Sunday. Um the residents up in North Quarry, um the trucks from EverSource. Uh were out there and I know Flag Swamp, uh Flag Swamp Road was a complete disaster. Um there were there were a couple poles down and one of the poles was actually had a transformer on it. So they were down um uh significantly, so. Um so I believe that's available to everybody, but I do, we do have a reverse nine one one program in town. Uh which can be utilized for something like this, but I I'm not sure if you have to sign up for it and that way you get um. So maybe this is something that um we can put up through Dartmouth in hands. Uh and and go through that way.
Yeah.
Um to to get everybody, you know, at least the information out. Mister Tattlebaum?
Well, it 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 sounds to me, I'm listening to Frank and Fallout by Stanley, uh these are people who would prefer. Bobby elderly, they'll pick up a phone and call someplace and listen to a message. And if we have that and someone's gonna make the message and make it, you know, tight enough and informed enough. And it's a big town to be able to do, is it realistic that they can that we can provide that service?
Well, one of the things, I mean, you know, one of the things with the outage map. You know, it it gives you generalized neighborhoods as to how many people are out.
I I don't think that Frank's talking about that, Sean. I think he's talking about.
No, 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 I understand that, but that's just, you know, if you have the internet service. There were some people, I I think if I'm not mistaken, in looking at some of the posts on social media. That less than twenty-five percent of the town lost internet service, uh that the majority of the internet service stayed up for everybody. It was the power that was down, uh and generally it is the power that gets knocked out first because that's the top line. And generally if a tree is gonna, if a tree, if it's gonna whack, it's gonna whack that top line. A situation like Flag Swamp Road where, you know, a tree came down exactly on the pole and knocked down the whole thing. Well, that's a different story, but um we do have a, we do have access to a reverse nine one one. Uh I'm not sure if that's something that has to be signed. You have to sign up for it. Uh and if you do, then that's something that we need to get out to everybody to get this and utilize that. The school department does it with their with their um students when it when they need to broadcast school-wide emergencies. Um and you have uh, you know, the tech supervisor with his voice that everybody seems to go uh gooey over. Um you know, uh make the announcements, you know, that's the that's the way to go. So that's something we need to uh to take a look at. I think Sean can work with um Joe Viera. The EMA Director and with the Chief Avek and let's see if we can do something on the nine one one, the reverse nine one one.
Well, something, just they're looking for some information there and they're frightened and uh. At least we can do, it's not a big thing.
It it just from my own clarification, we're talking about a population who really wants to use their phone and call in to hear a phone message. Is that what we're talking about?
Well, I I think.
No, that was a radio.
I think phone is easier, uh because you may you you may lose internet, like I said, I I I lost everything. Uh I also understand that Tucker Road was closed twice because of trees falling and I I live on Tucker Road, I had no idea. I thought I was going anywhere, but if I was, it would have been nice to know that.
But but this message, I mean, think of all the messages you'd have to put on this. All the town, the streets and and towns and 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 the town that were blocked or um or in interchanges by the minute. I mean, who's gonna administer this sort of thing?
I mean, I mean, basically, the message can change every couple hours, saying that this is to inform you that. As of ten PM on such and such a date that uh EverSource is reporting that forty percent of the town is still without power. Um if you need, um if you need any emergency services, please call such and such. And if you're looking to find out uh when your uh power will be back on, please call EverSource at blank, 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 blank. Simple as that and then, you know. That's really, that's really, that's all that's really needed, you know?
Are we talking about possibly like that, the there's only three or four or five access roads in the whole town? Going north and south to and maybe pick that part of the reporting or just not get to that kind of detail?
No, don't don't get into that kind of detail.
Well, that seems what people are looking for.
And it can change throughout the storm, especially.
Yeah, it'll change, exactly.
And how extensive it is too.
Right, I mean, all those.
Forty percent of the town being out, the customer base is fifteen thousand six hundred and something. That's EverSource's customer base. So forty percent of that, you know. So.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it I think reverse nine one one is, I think is a good method. Uh and and the the template that's used can change depending on on what's called for. I think people just wanna know, have a a thumb sucker, if you will, so they find out. I think people just wanna know, have a a thumb sucker, if you will, so they find out what's what's really going on and does it affect them, I guess, that's uh.
Exactly.
So that's something that can be worked on. Alright, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, made by Mr. Gracie, beat John by half a second.
That's okay.
Alright, under motion, any questions? Alright, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Chair of Votes in favor, alright, good night, everybody.